The regular members, especially.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Martin Price.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I echo the thoughts of my fellow residents. I'm a resident here. I'm a businessman, retired, and I understand the financial aspects of an operation. But to propose such an increase seems not only illogical but unbordering, illegal. It's just ridiculous to think that people on fixed incomes who support this lake are going to be required to pay nearly twice as much as they're paying currently and for a whole lot less of the benefits surrounding the lake. You know, the lake's going to stay the same, but we're not getting the maintenance, we're not getting the amenities, we're not getting a lot of the things that the people were paying for before, and now you're asking them to pay more for the same or less. We request for you to reconsider these proposals and may just add a couple of things. How about a staggered rate for people that are senior citizens, like rates for 55, 65, 75, 85-year-olds, different than everybody else? You're also changing the pricing from Northport residents to also a Serra County resident for the discount. Why not have a staggered, Northport residents get one price, Serra County residents get another price, and then non-residents get a third level? It's just a lot more equitable to the people that really use this lake consistently and who support the city. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Olga Goncharuk.
Hi, my name is Olga Goncharuk, and I'm originally from Russia. And I'm talking behalf of the people who moved here just for the reason to go to the lake. We all bought the properties here, thinking about going to the lake and be healthy and active in life. And now with increased price, it's become almost impossible because most of us are retired and live in fixed income. And I've been coming to the lake for many, many years. And for European people, it's very common to go to the mineral springs. And here we have a unique place. It's the only one in Florida which has a warm water, warm mineral spring. Very unique, very historical, and as you know, it's a historical building since there which is supposed to be fixed. And we've been waiting for a few years, nothing is going on, no reconstruction, even the budget had been approved to fix the buildings. So nothing was done, and now you want to increase the price without doing anything. Even the water become polluted because nobody clean up the seaweed from there and no changing room, toilet is disgusting, and all the people who's coming with walkers, they have a hard time to walk and change, and it's mess and no rules for the children. Children are jumping and acting crazy, nobody stops them. People bring big stuff floating to use it in the lake. Lake is very small, and it's more for therapeutic reasons. And you should have rules, and people should follow the rules, and like it used to be. And if you want to increase the price, then you should provide something else, not like now. It's nothing, basically it's very unsanitary, it's not good for hygiene, it's no rules, it's like anarchy in there. And now you want to increase the price, and I would understand to do so if you would provide something extra. But it's nothing there, and I would say more than 90% of the people going there, elderly people with health issues, and they cannot even change their red clothes after everything. And to increase the price for people who live around, be moved for this lake, and we want to save it for the new generation. But seems like nobody, local government want to provide anything, just increase, increase, increase the price. And I think it's not fair because we are living here, we want to continue to go there. You don't increase price for people who's visiting, it still will be $20. Why we are supposed to pay? So it's a question I want to ask all of you, please.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Looks like we may have just received one more here. Okay. Sergey Savonov.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Sergey Savonov. We moved in 2019, but it's not what I'm going to discuss about. First of all, I'm kind of agree with a speaker before that speaker, absolutely, and with the speaker before me, I'm kind of almost agree. But what I'm going to discuss with you is pricing. First of all, like two previous speakers say, it's very important to keep warm mineral springs open because so many people moved because of it, and it's a gem of the Florida. It's the third mineral content in the world. I used to work there, by the way, when it was under different owners. So when I check the prices, correct me if I'm wrong, there is no discount for the seniors and kids, or it is? I don't, I'm kind of a...
No.
No?
No seniors, no veterans.
Oh, okay. So that's the first thing I'm going to discuss with you. And also, like a previous speaker said, yeah, I understand. The inflation, the prices going up, the previous lifeguards used to receive $12 an hour, now current lifeguards having more than $15 an hour. So it has to be paid somehow. But instead of increasing prices and do basically little things like putting mulch, putting extra chairs, it's not going to be a value, okay? It's not increasing the value. If you do the more, then yes, you can increase the prices. I'll say you have to do more advertising versus to involve more people and kind of pay the differences if you guys have that leg, like on considered budget. I don't think you have to, but maybe. So what else I'm going to say? And I do not understand why the region which is considered warm mineral spring was taken off from the discount prices. Because right now, I used to pay $150, now I'm paying $200, and it's going to be even more. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Moving on to announcements. City Clerk.
The current vacancies for the following boards and committees include Art Advisory Board, Auditor Selection Committee, Charter Review Advisory Board, Citizen Tax Oversight Committee, Environmental Advisory Board, Firefighters Pension Trust Board, Trust Fund Board of Trustees, Historic and Cultural Advisory Board, Joint Management Advisory Board, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Planning and Zoning Advisory Board, Veterans Park Advisory Committee, one resident in Northport to serve on the Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizen Advisory Committee. If anyone would like more information, please see the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Moving on to consent agenda, city manager, any items being pulled?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
All righty, any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make it.
Thank you, sir.
I move to approve the items in the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by Commissioner Langdon to approve the consent agenda. Nothing more to it, let's vote. And that passes five to zero. Moving on to public hearings, ordinance is second reading, ordinance 2025-14. Assistant City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read by title only.
In ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, amending the code of the city of Northport, Florida, Appendix A, City Fee Schedule, amending citywide fees, development services, development review, planning and zoning, and natural resources fees, development services, code enforcement fees, fire rescue district fees, police fees, parks and recreation general fees, parks and recreation facility rental fees, solid waste district fees, utility fees, road and drainage district fees, and social services fees, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, sir. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is second reading, the first reading was continued to today, July 22, 2025. We ask today that you adopt the ordinance number 2025-14 based on the fees that were stated and the revisions that have been made to the fee schedule as part of our budget for fiscal year 26. Happy to answer any questions you may have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you kindly. Commissioners, anything to this item? Nothing, nothing. Oh, Commissioner Duval.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading. We went through it the first time. But considering, you know, the public comment we've had on one part of this just this morning, I'm wondering if we could, you know, take a second look at those fees for warm mineral springs.
Settle down, Brooks.
And I want, you know, the public to understand also, warm mineral springs has been affected by a lot of things. Hurricane Ian, the age of the buildings, the costs of the reconstruction. All of these things take time. There are plans in the future. There's a section, you know, we put a conservation easement on the property, but there are plans for a section to be put out so that someday there may be, you know, a stand where, you know, you can get a sandwich or something like that. And future facilities, you know, such as showers and changing rooms. I understand, you know, I've been to warm mineral springs, and the way it is now just isn't right. But all of this does cost money. And warm mineral springs is supported by all of the taxpayers of the city of Northport. Some of those taxpayers, you know, do not use the facilities. There has to be a balance, you know, of cost. I did know, you know, a couple of the suggestions, you know, the one particularly caught my eye about, you know, maybe staggering rates for age levels, 65, 70, 75. I just wonder if we can somehow or other have a further discussion on these.
Do we, anybody have an appetite to bring back up the analysis so we can look at it with the fees and the fee structure and so it's sitting in front of us? Because there was some information that was incorrect that needs to be clarified, but it may help. Before we do that, I guess Commissioner Petro.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Based on the public feedback I've got between the first reading and the second reading, it was enormous personally. And I'm advocating for a change and not raising any rates and possibly take a look into the 2026 and possibly looking into senior discount. A precious part of our population needs to be treated with respect, and that respect would be manifested in the reduction of discounts, whether it's a staggering discount or age 55-plus, or maybe, as Commissioner Duval suggested, we have to do something. And I'm unwilling to vote to take that discount now as it is. So I'm open for the discussion on this matter. I was, when we first got this reading, the first reading, I was under impression that there was no change at all. But yet we do have a change on 30 visit pass, which I quickly realized it. So maybe we should do something to accommodate especially our seniors, who is a big part of our city, and frequent users of our parks, specifically this park. So I'm going to be insisting of doing something for the seniors.
Commissioner Langdon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have done a disservice to the community in saying that Warm Mineral Springs is profitable because we have not included in that analysis the maintenance of the property, and clearly we've not put any money into the maintenance of the building, which is why this commission allocated $10, $11 million for the renovation of those buildings. Again, in our analysis of Warm Mineral Springs, we never talk about the $5.5 million, the taxpayers of this city paid to acquire it, and now another $11, $12 million, the taxpayers of this city will pay to restore those buildings. So no, Warm Mineral Springs is not profitable. And relative to the size of our city, we have over 95,000 people who live here. The vast majority of those people, if they even know Warm Mineral Springs exists, do not use it. So it's a very expensive asset for a small group. The cost of running it has increased dramatically over the past few years. It is unfair to compare our rate structure with state parks because they have federal and state funding for their operations. Warm Mineral Springs, in contrast, is paid 100% by the taxpayers of the city. So again, as Commissioner Duval said, we do need to have a balance, and in my mind, it is fair for the users of that asset to contribute to the costs of operating it and maintaining it, which we have never done in the past. So, thank you for that. So that's really all I have to say. I would, I like your suggestion there of taking a look at the rate structure again because, again, in the public comment, there was a lot of misinformation, and so I think we need to clarify that. But I see that Commissioner Emmerich is on board.
Vice Mayor, you're up.
Yeah, I'm not going to make you walk down here for nothing, Sandy. In the first presentation, the question is, the reason you got rid of the yearly pass was because you sold absolutely zero of them? Was that what was presented to us?
Sandy Funheller, Parks and Recreation Director, that is correct. There's been no sales of the annual pass. The only reason that was recommended to be removed is because of that debt.
Correct. And I just wanted to put that out there because it contradicts what was stated earlier, and that was the reason why. So thank you very much. That's all I had, Mayor.
Excuse me, sir. Please. This point. Entertaining the motion.
We do have a public e-comment, if you're entertaining.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. We do have one e-comment from Gregory Loffe. "My wife and I are year-round residents of Northport. We write to share a number of growing concerns regarding the state of the springs, concerns that have accumulated over the past five to six years and have only intensified since Hurricane Ian. Following the hurricane, Warm Mineral Springs has suffered from neglect, services have been drastically reduced, and the facilities have fallen into disrepair. The showers have been removed, and the remaining changing rooms are simply bathrooms. The lake itself is no longer being properly maintained, resulting in visible algae growth and a decline in water quality. In the past, the springs offered a vibrant environment, a restaurant, water, exercise programs, yoga under the trees, dry and water massages. All of these have been eliminated. At the same time, yearly passes, once a vital benefit to regular patrons, have been discontinued. Most troubling is the proposal on your agenda to increase entrance fees for local residents who rely on the 30-day passes. This change feels especially unfair to those of us who have supported, protected, and advocated for this park for years. Pricing out the very community that helped preserve the springs runs counter to the spirit of the public stewardship and access. We moved to Northport four years ago, having visited the springs for several years while living in Virginia. The springs were a key factor in our decision to relocate. Warm Mineral Springs is not a luxury. For us and many others, it is a vital part of our health and wellness routine and a cornerstone for community life. It is more than a sinkhole with warm water. It is a natural and cultural treasure that deserves care, respect, and accessibility. We respectfully urge you to reconsider your price hike proposal in order to protect affordable access to Warm Mineral Springs for local residents. Rather than raising prices, we ask that efforts focus on restoring services and maintaining fair access to this unique and healing place." That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I'm now entertain motion. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Sandy, once again. I know that all, we're just picking on you this time because of the fees, and all these fees are combined in a budgetary process. Now, if we were to move forward, going forward with this, would we be able to have a meeting after, like maybe the budget is proposed, to go ahead and redo these, like steps or stages for like veterans, 65, 75? Would we be able to adjust those at a later date if we seen fit?
Yes, we would just need to bring forward another ordinance to amend the fee schedule.
So going forward, we can accept this now for our budgetary reasons due to timing and everything like that?
Yes.
And then we can always readjust and have a separate meeting to adjust them at a future date.
Yes, and I would recommend that if we are going to look further beyond the data that staff presented and the presentation we gave on the three-year plan for the fees, that this go back to Wildin and have outside consult on the fees.
Okay, I just wanted to, thank you, I just wanted to know what the process could be. That's all I have, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, I have one. Yes, Ms. Sandy, I have one more question for you. In the public comment, there was a lot of inaccurate information. What are we doing to communicate the actual new schedule to the users of Warm Mineral Springs?
We have not done anything yet because the fees are not approved.
Right.
So once the fees are approved, if today they are approved, then we would be putting that information out, it would be posted at the site, it would be on the website, there would be quite a bit of outreach to let people know when the fees are changing and how that impacts them. I just, the daily fees are not changing. This is just reducing the discount that is extended to the number of visits that you purchase.
Yes, I'm really supportive of moving forward as Vice Mayor suggested. We can always take another look, but I would wait until accurate information has been disseminated to the community before we would bring back an ordinance to relook at the schedule. That's it for me.
Commissioner Petro.
Thank you, Mayor. I would strongly suggest that we can move forward for the budgetary purposes and improve the schedule of fees, with the exception of eliminating the increase of Warm Mineral Springs discount. We can take a look at the later date, but once we pass all of it, it's going to be hard to do it or not feasible. My suggestion is, let's go forward, with the exception of the Warm Mineral Springs. We can bring it back later after we get more analysis from the staff. That would be probably more appropriate way of doing it. Then we can take a look at rates, stagger rate, discount, veterans discount, senior discount, and all that stuff.
Mayor, if I might make a suggestion?
Sure.
What I'm hearing is we have a potential motion on the floor and a potential amendment to that motion. So I would suggest that we get the process rolling, and then we can sort of deal with it.
Entertaining the motion.
I'll make it, move to adopt ordinance number 2025-14 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Langdon to adopt ordinance 2025, or second reading on 2025-14. There's nothing more to that, let's vote. That passes three to two, with Commissioner Duval and Petro voting in the no, reason stated, gentlemen, or?
Like I said, we could move forward with the exception of Warm Mineral Springs, as stated reasons earlier, that we can take a look at the analysis of proposed discounts for veterans, senior citizens, and stagger rates.
Yes, you may offer up no amendment or to the original motion, I mean, sort of at the point where we'd have to bring it back as a separate item on the agenda to be discussed with a separate ordinance if, you know, if that's, you know, any, either of your desires, you know, all you need to do is advise city manager that it's an item you want to discuss at a point in time, and we can bring it back.
Yes, you know, I have the same concerns, you know, Commissioner Petro has, and I would like to see a motion, not sure if I know how to get it in, you know, that this fee schedule for parks and recreation be brought back up for discussion, you know, for some possible changes.
Are you talking, when your comment was, bring back the fees for parks and recs or just mineral springs?
Well, I just think, you know, Warm Mineral Springs would be covered under that, but if you want to make it particular to Warm Mineral Springs, you know, I'd be okay with that.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
City Attorney, is that necessary, or does it just need to be put on the agenda in the future for discussion?
Thank you for that question. If you'd like to have a consensus to bring it back, you can do that. City Manager has enough information as it is, you can put it on another agenda, depends on how you'd like to handle it.
And the reason I ask that is because of the communication on possibly having to go out and do more of a study. That's going to take time.
Sounds like it might take some time.
If we had to do that, that's why I'm asking, if we had it as a separate agenda item, then we can get the facts and figures on what it all entails, on what the process would be moving forward.
Correct.
That's what I was trying to get at legally, so.
Would also give us a feel for the impact on the overall budget because there's really less than $300,000 positive cash flow on this thing. If we were to adjust these rates and discount for certain categories, we may well, you know, eliminate that. So I think it really does need some work if that's the desire of commission. before we can, you know, do anything here. It might be best to ask for it to be added as an agenda item. That gives staff time to prepare some analysis and, and really take a look at what the impact of some of these changes might be, because, um, it, it is gonna be somewhat important that we make sure we have the adequate resources to do the repairs and maintenance that are gonna be necessary going forward with a $10 to $15 million investment in the springs to, to, you know, bring that back to something that even approaches acceptability. We're really gonna have to make sure we have the money set aside and that the springs can generate that money necessary to keep up with it, so it doesn't fall to disrepair like it did in the past, so. If somebody want to make a motion to, uh, direct staff to bring this back as an agenda item at a future date, um, we'll entertain that motion.
Do we need to make it as a motion, or can we just ask for a consensus to have it brought back as a separate agenda item?
Nice thing about motions is it's a directive. It's up to you, consensus is consensus.
Oh, I'm good at making motions.
Practice makes perfect.
Practice also makes mistakes. I'd like to make a motion that we bring back for further consideration the fee schedule for Warm Mineral Springs and direct staff to put together information for the public, so that they know what's real and what's not.
Very good motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Would you care, sir, to please read it back?
Sure, to direct the city manager to bring back for further consideration the fee schedule for Warm Mineral Springs and to direct the city manager to put together information for the public.
I may, may ask, Mr. Mayor, what information are you looking for specifically, so the staff knows what to, what to put together?
Well, things like, uh, the fact that, you know, people were complaining about the yearly pass has been eliminated, but as our Director of Public Work said, no one has used that pass, no one has bought that pass. So, we'd like, I'd like to get, you know, accurate information brought back to the public. You know, maybe if we, you know, uh, residents can attend a meeting that discusses just these things. So that there's understanding, you know, of what's going on and, um, like, you know, I've read some comments lately about, you know, oh, the water quality is degrading. I'm sure if our water quality was degrading, um, our staff would know about it. Those things are looked at. Um, and we've, and I'm sure, uh, the state would look at things and say, hey, wait a minute, you can't be putting people in, in bad water. So I just want to get, you know, uh, the truth of things out and, you know, an understanding, you know, from, from all sides, you know, of what the, what the facts are, what the costs are, and the fact, you know, I do want to make, make it known that our public work staff, they do one heck of a job. They're involved in, uh, dog parks, aquatic centers, you know, basketball courts, soccer fields, you know, all around, you know, this is, uh, they're busy, they work hard, they deserve a thank you. That's it.
I think that would be the Parks and Recreation staff, sir.
Right.
You were addressing. Nothing whatsoever to do with this.
City Manager, um, you feel somewhat comfortable with, with what information staff might have to bring back in order to make this a fruitful conversation?
I, I feel like, and I have to push my button, I'm shaking my mind, I feel like I know what we're gonna bring back. I'm not sure if it's going to meet the expectation of what you are looking for. When you say bring back accurate information, I feel like the information we presented you was accurate. I think you're looking for a different viewpoint of the accuracy of the information, and that's not something that we own. You, your, your reaction is due to, um, the feedback that you've heard today. Our reaction is based on the consultant report that we did and the data that our team keeps. So, I'm not so sure, other than explaining our information and our position, what you're looking for for us.
Okay, let me, let me make.
We have a motion on the floor. Okay, so we need to move forward on this motion.
And that's to bring it back to discussion.
And that's to bring it back for discussion. So, with that, um.
To clarify.
Right.
I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, that, I mean, we've got a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by, I believe, was the Vice Mayor, and, um, at that, let's vote. And that passes four to one, with Commissioner Langdon in the negative.
Yeah, I would care to comment. One, staff has done a lot of work on this fee schedule. It is accurate, and they compiled the information and, and made these changes based on a directive from this body that we move Warm Mineral Springs in a direction of being self-maintaining. And I'm, I don't think there's any need to revisit the information. I heard from Director Sandy that a communication plan will be in place, and again, she's right on, there was no approval of the new fee schedule, so why communicate it when it's not approved already? So, I think a lot of the concerns and questions can be addressed, not all of them, but a lot of the concerns and, and questions can be addressed, uh, through proper communication of what's changing and what's staying the same and the whys behind it. I just don't think there's any need to revisit it.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Duval, uh, I'm sorry, I don't recognize you because we've already voted on this item, so there's no further discussion, only the individual commissioner who voted against it has the procedural right to speak to it, so we've already approved your motion, and this will be brought back for commission to take another look at. Moving on to the ordinance 2025-16, Assistant City Clerk, would you be kind enough to read by title only?
An ordinance of the City of Northport, Florida, clarifying the qualifications for appointment as a hearing officer and alternate hearing officers, amending the city code of the City of Northport, Florida, section 2-111 and 2-505, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, sir. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading, continued from July 8th of 2025. We are asking that you.
Could I have a little quiet in the audience, please, kindly, so the people who are listening to this online can hear? Thank you.
We are asking that you adopt ordinance 2025-16, um, today, but as a reminder, the proposed amendment relocates qualifications of a hearing officer from chapter 2, article 9, code enforcement, section 2-505 of chapter 2, article 4, officers and employees, division 1, hearing officers, and removes the requirement for a hearing officer to resign in or practice law in Sarasota County. Approval of this ordinance will facilitate appointment of alternate hearing officers to help prevent cancellation of code enforcement and zoning appeal hearings, thereby avoiding delayed abatement or correction of code violations that negatively impact the neighborhoods and ensuring that the city processes appealed in various applications within the required statutory timelines. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, sir. Commissioners, questions, discussion? Commissioner Duval.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading. We went through the first reading and we didn't have any large discussion about this. You know, we all looked at it and we all agreed with it, agreed to bring it forward for the second reading. I don't see where we need to make any changes to this today.
Well, thank you, sir. Anybody else, or are we good? Any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
In which case, I am gonna close this public hearing and request a motion.
I'll make it move to adopt ordinance number 2025-16 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to adopt ordinance 2025-16 as presented. There's nothing more to this item. Let us vote. And that passes five to zero. Moving on to, uh, second readings, ordinance number 2025-17, Assistant City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough.
An ordinance of the City of Northport, Florida, amending the non-district budget and capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 for outsourced fleet repair services and increase in transportation impact fee funding for price widening Phase 1 project R15 PW1 in the amount of $6,681,789, providing for findings, providing for posting, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, sir. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second reading from the same item that was brought on July 8th, 2025. We're asking that you adopt ordinance number 2517 as presented. As a reminder, the financial impact of this item will be $200,000 will be added to the outsourced repairs expense line and the fleet management fund, and will be offset with additional revenue from the departments receiving the repairs. Also, $6,481,789 will be added to price widening Phase 1 project R15 PW1 from fund balance and transportation impact fees. We're happy to answer any questions you may have today, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, anything to this? Good? All right. Any public comment?
No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty, with that, I'll close this public hearing, request a motion.
I'll make it, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-17 as presented.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by Commissioner Duval, to adopt ordinance 2025-17 as presented. Let's vote, folks. This is five to zero. Moving on, second reading, ordinance number 2025-18. Assistant City Clerk, you're up.
An ordinance of the City of Northport, Florida, amending the non-district budget for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 for purchase of items from federal forfeiture funds in the amount of $159,606, providing for findings, providing for posting, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, sir. CM, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're asking today that you approve ordinance number 2025-18 on second reading today, July 22nd, 2025. The first reading was on July 8th of 2025, and as a reminder, the proposed ordinance number 2025-18 will be amending the non-district budget for the fiscal year 2024-25 as a request for the expenditure of the Florida forfeiture funds allocated to the Northport Police Department during the fiscal year 2024-25, totaling $159,606. As stipulated in the Florida Controveror Forfeiture Act, the city is required to adhere to specific guidelines regarding how these funds may be utilized. We're happy to answer any questions you may have, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Duval.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. When we looked at this the first time and, uh, looking at things, um, I didn't see a breakdown of how this money was being spent, and since then, um, I've been provided with that information. You know, we do have a breakdown, and I'm okay with everything on it except for, uh, the very, I think it was the very last thing that was mentioned, there was a, an expense for active board administration of $5,500. Did I just get a? I wanted to explain to me who or what that active board administration is.
I believe that explanation belongs to the next item, which is the resolution deciding how we're going to spend the forfeiture item. This one is just the second reading of your confirmation that you agreed to have those funds be spent for this particular purpose.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else to this one, Commissioner? Any public comment?
No public comment, sir.
And I'm looking for a motion. I'll close this public hearing, looking for motion.
I'll make it. I move to adopt ordinance number 2025-18 as presented.
Seventeen. No, eighteen, I stand corrected. Thank you. Got a motion by, uh, Mr. Langdon, seconded by the Vice Mayor to adopt ordinance 2025-18 as presented. If there's nothing more to it, let's vote. And that passes five to zero. Now, moving on to resolutions, uh, resolution 2025-R-37. City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read this by title only.
A resolution of the City of Northport, Florida, approving the expenditure of $159,606 in forfeiture funds, providing for incorporation of recitals, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, thank you. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today, we ask approval of resolution number 2025-R-37, uh, which states that to meet the statutory requirement, the North Police Department proposes expanding or donating $41,000, as follows, $20,000 for the safe neighborhood and crime prevention national line out, Florida FBI National Academy associates for $2,000, the National Association for the Advancement of Color People for $2,500, teen court of Sarasota for $5,000, drug-free youth with a D5 program for $2,000, child protecting services for $5,000, um, the Sarasota Coalition on Substance Abuse for $1,500, the Mothers Against Drunk Driving nonprofit of $1,500, and the Imagine at Youth Northport Marine for $1,500. In compliance with Porter statute, the remaining $118,606 will be used for new additional law enforcement equipment and will not be used to meet the normal operation expenses of the Northport Police Department. And, Miss Commissioner Duval, we are happy to answer your question now that you had on the prior question.
You're up, Commissioner.
It's just, you know, the same question as before, you know, is what is that active board, you know, administration fee of $5,500?
Morning, Todd Garrison, Chief of Police. It's a live, interactive board for the executive command, um, staff, so they can see stuff in real time. We have a lot of technology in the department, and it's a place to funnel everything into one spot in the, uh, command offices, so any of the executive command that's there can see real-time, uh, pictures of stuff that's going on, uh, even as, as far as personnel that's available to respond to emergencies, personnel that are out. It's a fully interactive board to funnel all information into one spot.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Nothing else to this, Commissioners? Uh, any public comment on this item?
No public comment, sir.
I'll, uh, confirm motion.
Make it move to adopt resolution number 2025-R-37 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner, um,
Langdon.
Langdon?
Last time I checked.
Last time we checked. To adopt resolution 2025-R-37 as presented. There's nothing else to that, let's vote. And that passes five to zero. Moving on to resolution 2025-R-45. It's a quasi-judicial hearing. Assistant City Clerk, can you read this by title only? Hence, we're in.
A resolution of the City, Commission of the City of Northport, Florida, approving a. a preliminary subdivision plat for the Village K Town Homes, a 146-lot residential town home subdivision along with two future commercial out parcel tracks, 900 and 901, on approximately 34.3255 acres located at southwest, southwestern corner of the intersection of Minnesota Beach Road and South River Road, providing for findings, providing for preliminary subdivision plat approval, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. And everyone wishing to provide testimony, please raise your hand and stand. You solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're about to provide is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking for ex parte, any ex parte communications. Commissioner Duval?
Um, my only communications on this have been in my, uh, agenda briefing with city staff.
Thank you. Mr. Langdon?
None for me.
None for me?
I have none.
Alrighty. Uh, do we have any aggrieved parties, Assistant City Clerk?
No, sir.
Uh, okay, uh, we're looking for a presentation here. And, uh, got 20 minutes?
Twenty. He's gonna do this in five.
That works for us.
John Luzinski, Senior Vice President, well in park. I have been sworn in. This plat, I guess, is the first one we're following a new process from the ULDC update, which takes the, uh, preliminary plat to the commission. Uh, the unique thing with this is obviously we've already have a VDPP approved on this parcel. This parcel is 34.33 acres, is immediately adjacent to the new Welland Park High School. Uh, and what we're doing is bringing in some townhomes, a city well site that will be feeded over to the city, a public supply well, which is at the corner. If you remember, uh, for those who were here when we did the VDPP approval, we envisioned all the frontage along River Road to be commercial. However, we can't put commercial within 500 feet of a public supply well. So that's why, uh, the site plan's been manipulated a little bit. Uh, in the staff report, there's a site plan that actually shows the high school, this property, but also the planned improvements for South River Road. As you're aware, we have been working with the Sarasota County Department of Transportation, working on River Road design. So what we show is basically matching those plans. We'll be around about at Minnesota Beach Road, and the two access points are actually included in those plans. So we're in the process of developing, we received a develop, deal a couple months ago. We're actually out there paving as we speak, and we are putting in those two connections. So the commercial probably comes in about two to three years, once River Road plant is actually under construction. Current plan for that design is permits in hand. Army Corps is gonna be the last one, probably June, July next year. Our agreement with the county says they have to bid that road within 120 days of the last permit. We think by late '26, early '27, River Road south of 41, now at least down to Winchester, will be under construction, which is a great thing for everyone in the neighborhood. Uh, the other interesting thing is the Village K VDPP, which this is the last plat, uh, was approved for 1,893 units. Well, as it evolved, we created a higher-end subdivision with bigger lots called Everly, and then we have Lakesburg. With this additional 146 townhomes, we are only gonna have 882 units in Village K. So we're only building 46.6% of allowable density, which has generally been the trend in Welland Park. I remember six years ago when we did VDPPs for Villages E, F, and G, you know, it was my first occurrence with, uh, the commission at that time, and there was a lot of consternation over fiscal impact and prices. And during that process, you know, we said, here's the prices we think. And staff at that point, we don't think you'll get that kind of pricing. That kind of pricing is literally 50% of our typical neighborhood today. And in the case of Everly, those, we have prices exceeding $3 million a home. So, Welland Park has evolved from what was envisioned six years ago to where it is today. That's all I have.
Thank you. Staff?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Sherri Willette Grandin, Planner 3, Planning and Zoning Division. I have been sworn. As the applicant previously stated, this Welland Park Village K preliminary subdivision plat is the first plat, uh, subdivision plat under the new process presented to you. Um, as such, typically, and I just wanted to preface this, uh, we usually have this come before commission first, and then another meeting where the final plat will be placed on consent. Due to the timing and the recess for the August hearing, the subsequent final plat will be, um, presented immediately after that, after this approval. This is under petition number PSPP dash 25 dash 02596. The applicant who is present is John Luzinski, President of the Minnesota Beach Ranch Lands. The property owner is the Minnesota Beach Ranch Lands, L L L P. This consideration before you is the subdivision, uh, preliminary subdivision plat for the Welland Park Village K Town Homes. It is located in the southwest corner of the intersection of Minnesota Beach Road and South River Road. As you could see here with the overall aerial map, it'll give you an idea of the proximity. It's just south of that Minnesota Beach Road and just to the west of East River Road. The purpose of this petition is to create 146-lot townhome residential subdivision along with the two commercial out parcel tracks identified as 900 and 901. The total impacted area is 34.3255 acres. In addition to the subdividing of the lots for development, it will also include amenity center track, which is identified, drainage, stormwater management system, facilities, common areas, landscaping, right-of-way access points, including ingress and egress. They, uh, shown for the signage and utilities. Fifty percent, 53% of the area has been allocated for open space. The proposed density is 4.25 dwelling units per acre, which is well within the adopted Village K, Village District Pattern Plan, or otherwise known as VDPP. Um, the preliminary subdivision plat was reviewed and found to be in conformance with Article 12 Subdivision Standards of the Unified Land Development Code. I would also like to add that this item was presented before the Planning and Zoning Advisory Board last Thursday, July 17th, 2025. They voted unanimously, five to zero, to approve this. In addition, um, the accompanying resolution was reviewed and approved by the interim, uh, city attorney, as well as the, um, uh, reviewed by city staff and also found in conformance. Uh, it was also, uh, no, public notification was provided as per the Unified Land Development Code. Based on that, staff is respectfully requesting approval of the preliminary subdivision plat through Resolution 2025 dash R 45. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, as we have no aggrieved parties, um, I'm looking for rebuttal. Um, applicant?
I have no rebuttal.
Staff?
Staff has no rebuttal. Thank you.
Right. Um, any public comment?
No public comment, sir.
And commission questions, discussion. Commissioner Duval?
Yes. This is for city staff, for the developer, and for the U.S. Post Office. Can, if you go to the property praiser site for Sarasota County, it lists this property as being Venice 34293. Can somebody please get together and get it so it's listed as Northport, Florida with a Northport, Florida zip code? And that's just a general comment for everything related to the western side of our city. Thank you.
In response to that, Commissioner, um, going way back, the developer and the district looked into this. Problem is very simple. Most, if not all, of West Villages Improvement District gets serviced by the Venice Annex Postal Service. Um, there, the U.S. Postal Service does not have the money nor the inclination to want to build a post office in West Villages. Even upon the recommendation or, or the offer of the developer and, and West Villages actually building a post office and giving it to the U.S. Postal Service, they rejected that idea because they do not have the money to service it and maintain it. So we are, as a result, tied to the zip code that is tied to wherever mail is delivered. It is a U.S. federal government issue, and there's really absolutely nothing we can do at this point. Correct me, uh, Mr. Luzinski, is, are there actually a couple of communities that will be serviced by the Inglewood Post Office and end up having Inglewood as their mailing address?
Originally, we thought everything south of Minnesota Beach Road was gonna have an Inglewood address. And then when we, the first plat through there was the Welland Park Golf and Country Club. Inglewood Post Office realized they really couldn't service that portion of the ranch and deferred it to Venice. I suspect as we get closer to the intersection of Winchester and West Village Parkway in the years to come, some of the very south end may be served by Inglewood Post Office. I don't know if that decision's been made formally by the, uh, federal government or not. Once they switch some of it, will they switch it all? But that's to be determined.
And yeah, and to date, you haven't seen any change in perspective from the standpoint of the, uh, U.S. Postal Service, huh?
Uh, that has not been seen on our radar screen.
I don't know if that helps, Commissioner. This has been a many-year discussion.
Just as a little bit of a rebuttal, uh, I'm the District 3 Commissioner, and I live between Liddell Blade and Chamberlain. And my mail is delivered through the Northport Annex, which is underneath the Venice Post Office, but I have a Northport address, not Venice.
I don't know how they did it, but... Yes, that would make a lot of people very happy. And maybe some not so. Commissioner Petro?
In remark, thank you, Mayor. Uh, to make a little remark, I think it's a good marketing strategy anyways for the developers, so might be beneficial for some people, but, uh, regardless, uh, the other thing I want to mention is the Resolution 2025 dash R dash 45 and Resolution 2025 dash R dash 46, they appear to be very similar with the exception of one word, at least with the title block. And I guess that my question is to legal, um, what's the difference between the two resolutions besides that one is preliminary and one is final?
One is preliminary and one is final.
That's the explanation.
That's it? There are no, no, no differences, no?
Uh, I'm not sure if there's anything different within the actual plat themselves.
No, the plat is in compliance with the subdivision plan.
Just due to timing, I believe, is, is why you're seeing it like this.
And is it usual to have one preliminary and final in one meeting, or is it unusual? I don't recall, but I've been here only less than a year.
I, I can answer that. So, Commissioner, so under the new Unified Land Development Code, the preliminary subdivision plat, it will be presented for commission for review. In the past, the commit, this commission or other commissions have only seen a final plat. So you're seeing both stages, preliminary on how everything, uh, the lots are laid out as well as infrastructure. And the final plat shows the final lot configuration with all of the dedications in compliance with Florida statutes, uh, Chapter 177, um, the Unified Land Development Code. So the resolution is specific to each item. So you, we need a one separate resolution for the preliminary and then a, and then another resolution for the final plat, because they're two different processes, if you will.
I guess my question is then, between the preliminary and final, there's a time for more study or more of, uh, the commissioner, or is it just a standard process?
So, I want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. So, usually, uh, usually this goes before the Planning and Zoning Advisory Board and then the commission, the preliminary. Then after another meeting, the final plat will be presented as a consent item. So in this instance, because of the, the break that we have in August with the planning board and commission for timing purposes, we had placed this both on the same agenda. So that's why it's going to be a little bit different than what would be normal.
Okay.
You good, Commissioner?
Yes.
All right. And I am, uh, looking for any closing arguments. Greaved parties don't exist. Uh, staff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, staff is respectfully requesting the approval of the subdivision preliminary plat for the Village K Town Homes, as it does meet the requirements in the Unified Land Development Code for subdivision regulations. Thank you.
And applicant?
I'm here to request approval of our preliminary plat. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, I will close this public hearing. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make it.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the preliminary subdivision plat, Resolution number 2025 dash R dash 45, and find that based on the competent and substantial evidence, the plat is consistent with ULDC Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 2.2.9, and Article 12 subdivision standards.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by Commissioner Langdon, to approve the preliminary subdivision plat, Resolution number 2025 dash R dash 45. Find that based on the competent and substantial evidence. Plat is consistent with the ULDC Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 2.2.9, and Article 12 subdivision standards. If there is nothing more to that, folks, let us vote. And that passes five to zero. Moving on to, gee, Resolution 2025 dash R dash 46. Assistant City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to read by title only.
Uh, Resolution of the City Commission of the city of Northport, Florida, approving a final plat for the Welland Park Village K Town Home Subdivision 146 Lot Residential Town Home Subdivision along with two future commercial out parcel tracks, 900 and 901, on approximately 34.3255 acres located at the southwestern corner of the intersection of Minnesota Beach Road and South River Road, providing for findings, providing for recording, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective...
Thank you, sir. CM, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is for the approval of subdivision final plat for Welland Park Village K Town Home Subdivision, 146 lot residential townhome subdivision, and two future commercial out parcel tracks, 901 and 901, located at the southwestern corner of the intersection of Minnesota Beach Road and South River Road. We ask that the City Commission approve Resolution number 2025 dash R 46. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, anything left to discuss on this item? Nope, nope. Okay. Any public comment?
No public comment, sir.
And I'll close this public hearing, request a motion.
I'll make it.
Go ahead.
I move to adopt Resolution number 2025 dash R dash 46 as presented.
Got a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to adopt Resolution 2025 dash R dash 46 as presented. And let's vote. That passes five to zero. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to H, Resolution 2025-R-48. Assistant City Clerk, you're up.
Resolution of the City Commission of the City in Northport, Florida, repealing and replacing Resolution Number 2025-R-44, approving solely for the limited purposes of Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code and Section 163.01 Florida statutes, the intuist of Capital Projects Finance Authority of its educational facilities, revenue bonds, Imagine School at Northport Project, and an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $78 million. The proceeds from the sale of which will be used principally to finance and refinance the cost of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain charter school facilities located within the city of Northport and owned and operated by Imagine School at Northport Incorporated, authorizing the execution and delivery of an interlocal agreement with the authority, approving a conflict waiver requesting submitted by Bryant Miller Olive P.A., providing certain other matters in connection with the bonds, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. City Manager, your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 2025-R-44 is adopted at the June 24, 2025, City Commission meeting, regular meeting, but needs to be replaced to increase the principal amount of the tax exempt bonds to $78 million from $60 million. Resolution Number 2025-R-48 allows for this increase while keeping everything else the same. The city does not have any financial obligation in the original item or the increase in this particular item. We ask that you approve Resolution Number 2025-R-48 as presented. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, anything to this? Mr. Duval?
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, as City Manager just stated, this is just replacing the resolution we passed before. It's just a change in the amount of dollars. This is not, not the city of Northport being responsible for any of this money. This is basically so that the Imagine School can be tied to a municipality for tax exempt purposes of building this school. So I kind of recommend that we pass this.
There. Anybody else? Any public comment on this item?
No public comments, sir.
Then I'll close the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Duval, if you wish to.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 2025-R-48 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Duval, seconded by the Vice Mayor to adopt Resolution 2025-R-48 as presented. There's nothing more to it, folks. Let's vote. And that passes five to zero. Anybody need a break, or are we ready to plow through?
Take a break and then come back and then show it.
Yeah. That works for me. It works for everybody else. Let's take a quick 10. Well, let's take 12, so that'll bring us back at 11:30. How's that sound?
You're a lot better than Barb. She was still.
Could you, could you?
All right, we are back in session. 11:31 and everybody's ready to go, I think. So we're moving on to general business, 25-2508. City manager, your item to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is discussion of possible direction regarding the unsolicited public-private partnership, P3 conceptual proposal related to the police department headquarters and the solid waste transfer station. So during the city commission regular meeting on July 8th of 2025, the commission considered an unsolicited P3 conceptual proposal submitted by the Florida Development Solutions LLC, or FDS. While the commission has initiated efforts to further explore the P3 and the certificates of participation processes, formal commission action is still required to either accept or reject the unsolicited P3 conceptual proposal submitted by FDS, or the police department headquarters facility and the solid waste transfer station, per the city code section 2 dash 4 to 0, P3 subsection, subsection P5. The next step in the process is for the commission to select from the two available options. One is to reject without substantive review, and the other is to accept for substantive review. So this is basically making sure that we get on record your official direction for these two projects. We only received one official direction, and this is making sure that we're on the same page, bringing back what you requested, and we're happy to answer any questions that you need, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, let's have at it. Commissioner Langdon.
I'll jump into the deep end. So part of what I needed in the last conversation relative to the police station was an analysis of our ability to afford it, and that's independent of how we might try to finance it. And I'm really struggling because I think even if we had the ability to bond out the police project, I'm not, and we had no other infrastructure needs, I'm not sure we could support the repayment. I'd like to be proved wrong, but so far I've not seen anything that confirms our ability to pay on a project of that size. I'm just not at all confident that we have the funds to be able to do that. I think we looked at a $10 million a year cost potentially for that, and I just don't know where that money would come from. So I would recommend we sort of talk about the police station and then talk about the transfer station separately, but we need to figure out how to house our police, and I would love someone to tell me how we can pay for a $115 million project at this point in the city's financial history.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Langdon. It's a big number, especially when we go to have to be committed to that payment, and I brought that up at the prior meeting, too. I don't foresee us being able to do that, but I do foresee us being able to maybe have another meeting, let's look at the PD, look at the plans, look and see how we can downsize it to a lower number, you know? Citizens were out there saying, hey, if you got it down to the 85 million, you know, we would support that. We just didn't want the Taj Mahal. But we want to keep in mind that we're saving our blueprints, everything like that, and utilizing that, because that's money spent. So probably the best avenue would be looking at, you know, taking off some of the shell space and possibly instead of building it to 2065, build it to 2045 standards. Instead of the 40 years, we're looking at building it out for 20 years, so we're not making the same mistake as we did in the past with the other police department, but looking towards the future within reason and see what those numbers come in, because, you know, I'm hard pressed to even say that even if it was half that amount, could we be able to afford it? And it's going to depend on the interest rates and everything like that, hopefully coinciding to make this work. And again, but if we had the ability to borrow under different circumstances, that should cut the interest rate down quite a bit, because there's other avenues. I think we talked before, we were at, if we were going to go with the other avenues, if we could borrow was percent and a half to 2%, we're looking at close to 4% in these proposals here. So I think if we just downsize, relook at it, reimagine what we need for right now, and then everything down the road, you know, maybe five, 10 years down the road, another commission will come up and say, okay, let's plan for 2065 and let's get started on that shell space moving forward. This way, it may be in place by 2045, and we're still ahead of the game. So I mean, that's what I'm looking at at this time. I think it's a good compromise. It's needed. We know it's needed. So let's figure out a way to where we can get it, get it in place, get it moving, because it's a huge process, you know? It's like we need room at City Hall as well, abandoning the PD, moving departments over there, opening up room here for departments. It's saving, you know, $15 million, $20 million on another building bill. So we're trying to utilize what we have to the best ability without having to overspend, but, you know, that's where I'm at. I'd have to reject this plan at this time. Let's go forward, look at it again, let's have another discussion. You know, hopefully it'll open up the doors for more community input as well to say, hey, maybe you don't need this, maybe you do need this. Build the space, just don't equip it for this, that, and the other. But we have to have those discussions. I'm not going to pick and choose today what's needed and not needed, but I'd like to have the plans in front of us when we do discuss that. That's all I have, Mayor.
I mean, this is a tough one, you know? It's a huge number. I don't know that there's any real doubt that there's a need. I don't, personally, I'm a big believer in listening to your subject matter experts, and when two independent consulting studies say this is the appropriate scope, then, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that's the appropriate scope. The third piece to this is being able to actually pay for it, and this commission certainly wasn't in a position to in debt the city without the public, the voting public, and they voted resoundingly against doing this. So, you know, to put the numbers in perspective, with a P3 partnership, which is what we're looking at here, the cost to fully amortize over about 35 years, the cost of this thing is in the area of $8 million per year, which equates to a 20% increase in property tax rate, in ad valorem taxes to pay for this. That is not, in my opinion, sustainable at all. If you cut this project in half and we built a $50 million police headquarters, which would be sorely inadequate to provide what we need, it would still be a 10% increase. I have come to the conclusion personally that there is no way, at this point in time, this city should be spending money or trying to find a way to spend the money to build the police headquarters at this time and do it in an inadequate way, in a way that does not meet with the subject matter professionals who have helped guide us and advise us in this. So as much as I'm not a kick the can down the road guy, I have to say, we need to find a way to buy time strategically for the next five-plus years until this city grows up economically, okay? We have a prize at the end of the road here of trying to build our city commercially, which will bring in the kinds of revenues we need to be able to afford some of the infrastructure and some of the needs we have. I just don't see it. I hate to take anyone for exercise. FDS did a great job. The fact that this group would come unsolicited and try to help our city out, I think is outrageously commendable, and I appreciate it. I can't tell you how much, because, you know, in order to grow a city of our size with the growth curve we're experiencing, we need all the partnerships we can get. And so I truly appreciate this group stepping up and looking to help us in any way that they can, but we have to, we just have to accept that, in my opinion, the infrastructure challenges we face as a city are so paramount and of such a priority that if we don't devote the majority of our resources to building out that infrastructure or help facilitating to build out that infrastructure out east, the other activity centers, we're not going to achieve the kind of commercial revenue sources we need in order to be able to sustain this growth. So, you know, I, you know, with great regret feel that we need to take this issue off the table and move forward on so many other issues that are before us that are important to continue to go over it and over it and over it again in hopes that we will see a different outcome. Doesn't make sense to me. You got to remember, even at $50 million, this is a 10% increase in the property tax to our citizens. It's just not sustainable, it's just not acceptable, especially when we struggle year after year to balance our budget, and in light of the uncertainty we face in the next year or two with what might happen to property tax rates or some other permutation the state might come up with, if anything, we better prepare to be hunkered down and really spend our money on needs, not wants, and I don't dispute for a minute, this is a need, this is just a need. We cannot afford it this time, so. That's how I feel on this one. Anybody else want to weigh in on this? Anybody want to talk more about the second piece to this, which is the solid waste transfer station?
If I might ask a question, Mayor. How do you want to proceed? Do you want a motion with both of these? Should we make a motion on each project individually? How would you like to proceed?
I suggest we do it separately, because I think, you know, we could end up in different places on each of them. I'm entertaining the motion.
Do we have to do public comment first?
Oh, yeah, probably a good idea.
All right, we do have one public comment. John O'Grady.
Hello, John O'Grady, Florida Development Solutions. Thank you again for the opportunity to talk with you. All these points are taken, and you guys are in a great spot, like a lot of commissions and councils around the state. What we offer, and I just want to reiterate what we offer, we're coming in at our risk, at our expense, to do exactly what you were just talking about. We want to, you've given direction to your staff, your staff that engages us through the P3, and we sit down and we go through step by step. Hey, we have $10, and that's it, not to exceed. What can you do? And then we sit down with your staff and the design team and the contractor who you already have onboard, and we say, how can we value engineer this so we get the best product, all the needs? Mayor, you said that, and that's what we do a lot around Florida. We sit down and we have to sit with the city manager, county manager, the chief, fire chief, police chief, and say, all your wants have to go over here. It's needs. And we sit down and we sit there with the architect and we go through the needs. And what I'm asking is to allow the P3 to go forward, just so we can go through that exercise for you, so you're not doing the proverbial kicking the can down the road, because it's at no expense to you. And if we come back after value engineering and the price is still too high for you to direct the city to find the money, so be it, but at least you've done that exercise for all your citizens and taxpayers and have finally gotten through where you need to be on this. So we stand ready. I understand both sides of the story here. You're not unlike a lot of places around the state, but we just ask for the opportunity to work with you and to service your needs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Entertaining the motion.
I'll take a crack. I move to reject the P3 conceptual proposal pertaining to the building of a police department headquarters for the city of Northport.
Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Let's have that discussion, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, City Manager, this is a question. At the last meeting that we discussed this, so basically this is just a procedure to get those questions answered and everything like that going forward. You know, we wanted to know what the actual numbers were going to be. We wanted to know what the negotiations were going to be, and by going through this phase, it keeps that door open to where we will get that information, correct?
Yes and no. So.
Well, if we're looking at a $6 million a year payment, and they go and negotiate and they get it down to, let's say, five, that's a different story that they'll be bringing back to us, correct?
Well, the exercise was to go explore the details of the questions that you didn't have answered at the prior meeting. It wasn't to negotiate with them, but to have a better understanding of where that path would mean, along with the other path that we're already exploring, which is the city doing a COPS or the city sort of driving the bus. Even if you don't go with the proposal that you have in front of you and you reject it, and you still come back and say in the very near future, you know what, we want to put an RFP out of our own house with what we want in a proposal, and they would be able to bid on that RFP that you would put out. So this doesn't sort of close that door, but depending on what you direct us to do, we could go both at the same time, or it sounds like we might go on our own path, which might include them at some certain point in the future. So it's a different, it's a yes and a no. You can get both.
Well, if we want to solicit.
Right.
One, then we could set up our parameters and see if anybody bites out there.
Correct. Otherwise, if you gave direction today, we would go back, like he said, like the gentleman said, we would sit down with them directly and sort of hash out some of those numbers specifically.
Okay, that's fine. I'm good. Mayor, sorry.
I believe we've got a motion. Can you read it?
Sure, sure. To reject the three, sorry, to reject the P3 conceptual proposal pertaining to the building of a police department headquarters for the city of Northport.
That motion was made by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by the Vice Mayor. If there's nothing more to it, vote. And that passes 5 to 0. Now let's switch over to the solid waste transfer station. Who's up first? Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I know we've stated this quite a few times, that it's definitely a need, it saves the city money, it definitely is a cost factor. With this, it's, again, it's by the numbers, and where I looked at it, the total cost for the solid waste transfer station was approximately $15 million to get it done and everything. Then I go and I look at the financing, I understand you got to make money when you're lending money, but that $15 million to build it over a 15-year period of paying back comes out to $27 million. So if we were to finance it, we're paying double. Yes, it's a 15-year time span, but I think there's other avenues that could be a little bit more reasonable and cheaper to do. So again, it's on the numbers, you know, the 1.8 every year, I don't think would be a hard number to come up with, you know, may have to raise the user rates or whatever to be able to do that, but I think that there's other avenues that we might be able to look at to get into financing a little bit better and a little bit more reasonable to where we are making money and saving money sooner rather than later, because we'd be invested $30 million, approximately 27, and then we can save money after all those payments have been made. So you're talking 15 years down the road before you're going to see any type of turnover, in my opinion. So again, I just think that the costs are too high for this one. At this moment, I think there's other avenues we can pursue. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Langdon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of all of the projects that were on the referendum, I think this particular project was the one that failed by the smallest margin. So the ROI analysis on this is compelling, and I'm very supportive. In fact, my original position on the transfer station was it was the perfect project for the city to consider implementing its own COPS procedure for funding it, because we know we can pay for it. However, I spent a lifetime in marketing in the high-tech industry, and I'm very sensitive to the fact that time to market has a tremendous impact on the cost of a project. So I would be very open in evaluating a two-pronged strategy with this particular project. I'd like to see what Florida Development Solutions can do. My general sense in reading the materials is that they can make it happen a lot faster than the city can if we're developing a COPS process for the first time, and I suspect it's more than a year. I think it's just going to take us a while to figure all of that out and get something in place. So I would be very open to proceeding with a P3 analysis of this, and I also, let me echo what Mayor Stokes had to say, I'm most appreciative of FDS coming forward with this information. It was really terrific, and I'm very open in pursuing it at this point in time, because again, I have, we have other funding mechanisms for this. We're not solely dependent on the millage rate, our property taxes to fund it. So I'd be very interested in seeing what FDS can come up with and if we can simultaneously do a serious evaluation of what it would take this city to put together its own COPS process, which I think we should do. But again, I'm open to looking at both of those alternatives for this particular project.
Commissioner DuVal.
Thank you, Mayor. If we were able to increase our solid waste fees by $50 a year, that's $2 million a year, using some form of a COPS, with a increase in solid waste fees of some number or a set number of years, we could pay for this, get it done quicker. You know, whether it be through this company's help, you know, with a P3 setup, a combination of the P3 and COPS program, definitely with, you know, like in my idea. definitely with, you know, like in my idea here of raising the solid waste fee for, you know, some set number, $50 a year, $100 a year, whatever it may be, for a set time period to get this project on its feet, get it done, and then cut that fee. The money being made up, being made up by the revenue that we can get. So, I'd be on board with something like that.
Right, sir. Yeah, I'll echo both your comments. I mean, this project just makes so much sense. It's got an incredible return on investment. I also think it's a value to pursue a simultaneous P3 exploration. At the same time, we look at doing a COPS ourselves. You know, time is money. And as Commissioner Langdon said, putting our own COPS together is going to take a period of time and a process of validation in court. That has to be weighed against the value of a partnership, a P3 partnership, that has the pieces in place to move fairly quickly on this. But, again, it comes down to dollars and cents and what it's going to cost our citizens, our taxpaying citizens and user fees for these. So, I'd be, you know, I'd be very willing to go down both avenues and have that brought back so we could take a good look at what the, you know, the pros and cons of each are and really, you know, drill down on both these. We've yet to have staff really come back with a hard plan on what would be involved for us to do our own COPS. And I think it's overdue, whether it's this project, another project down the road. Sooner or later, we need to avail ourselves to this financial tool that's out there. And, boy, I couldn't think of a project that better lends itself than this one. So, you know, I'm supportive. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just one last thing there. I got no issues with getting the information and finding out what the numbers are and what the process is coming back to us. But, I'm just putting out there ahead of time, paying double for anonymity is just not on my radar. I mean, especially even if it is over time. So, I'd be happy to see the numbers. I'd be happy to weigh the situations on getting it done rather than, you know, doing it through a P3 or COPS or other avenues. But, I mean, I'll support this going forward to get the information. But, I'm just being very wary on what the numbers are when they come back, and I'll have to reassess the situation at that point.
I think, Vice Mayor, and too, perhaps I could have been, you know, clarify what I meant by time, you know, time is money. In the time it takes to establish a COPS entity for the city and go through a validation process and putting this all together and getting to the point where we're ready to make commitments for, you know, getting the project done, not only is that a cost, but just what it might cost a year down the road or a year and a half down the road to actually do this project. You know, materials and labor costs money. You know, with the direction costs are going, every year, we're looking at an 8% to 10% increase in the cost of any project. So, you have to weigh that into the equation as well as the process of validation, which requires going before the court. And, you know, and can go short, or it can extend out a year or more, depending on whether or not it's challenged. So, you know, there are considerations. And that's why I agree with you. We got to look at all those numbers. We got to be able to see what the real cost differential is, because sometimes going with a partner who is ready, willing, and able to, like, move forward in an expeditious fashion may offset the costs. You know, bearing in mind they're going to make a profit. That's still may be offset by what it cost us to go through our own process. We don't know that. We don't have any of the information on what we'd be involved in, our doing a COPS on our own. We just don't. And so, you know, I'm open to, like, going down both paths. Let's see what the numbers are, bring them back, we'll take a look at them and make the best decision to use our dollars in the most cost-effective way.
And that's why I said I would support getting the information. Absolutely. I don't want to just shut the door and slam it. Let's get the information and go from there. Thank you, Mayor.
Entertain the motion. There's no more discussion. I guess we got public comment?
No public comment, sir.
Well, then.
I'll make a motion if you allow me to make two.
Absolutely, as many as you would like.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to accept the P3 conceptual proposal for the transfer station for substantive review and direct the city manager to provide written notification to the private entity outlining the anticipated timeframe for the city to complete its comprehensive review of the unsolicited proposal, again pertaining to the transfer station.
I have a second. We need it read back. It's right there. So, if there's nothing more to it, we have a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by the Vice Mayor. And that passes four to one with Commissioner Petro in the negative. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It just feels like we're doing ourselves disservice because it's going to be doubled in money. And yet, we wanted to proceed. And to be fair to the FDS, and I command them to come and do unsolicited proposal, it's actually unfair to them, knowing in advance that we're going to reject them because it's still going to be twice as much. And as far as COPS, I think it's very needed. And whether it takes six months or 12 months, we still have to do it. Interest that we're going to lose, whatever the inflation or... It's still going to be much cheaper to do it ourselves. So, just want to be fair and open-minded and be transparent as possible, not to ourselves, but also to the FDS and this proposal. I just don't want to waste their time.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I believe you have a second motion?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. I move to direct the city manager to work with staff to complete a realistic assessment of the timeframe and costs for the city of Northport to pull together its own COPS process.
I have a second.
Second, Mayor?
Got a motion by Commissioner Langdon, seconded by Commissioner Duval to direct staff to pull together a potential pathway forward for the city to do its own certificates of participation regarding the solid waste transfer station. If there's nothing more to that, let us vote. And that passes five to zero. Excellent. Again, John, thank you very much and your organization. We appreciate that you care enough to step up. We know everybody's in business to make money, but at the same time, it's nice to know we have partnerships out there that, you know, are willing to work with us. So, again, thank you very much. Forward to hopefully figuring out whether this makes sense for a solid waste transfer station. Okay, we are looking at any general public comment?
No public comment, sir.
All right, moving on to Commissioner Communications. Commissioner Petro?
I attended Park's meeting. It was the public input. And I encourage everybody to fill out the survey for the future of our parks. It was very informative, and I enjoyed it a lot.
Vice Mayor?
I actually have something. I want to recognize former Commissioner Jim Blutcher. He has graced us with his presence this afternoon. So, welcome as always, Jim. Good to see you. That's all I got, Mayor.
Right. Commissioner Langdon?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
And Commissioner Duval?
Thank you, Mayor. I did attend the floodplain management meeting that the city staff held in Room 244 on Thursday, July 17. I attended the GAI consultant meeting at the Morgan Center on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan on July 10. And I also attended a Community Action Agency Board meeting in Sarasota on July 1.
All right. I myself really have nothing to report since last meeting. So, I'll move on to Charter Officers, City Manager. Anything to report?
No, sir. Thank you, sir.
Assistant City Attorney?
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
And Assistant City Clerk?
Nothing to report, sir.
Right, well, if there's nothing more to that, we are at 12:05, and I'm going to adjourn this meeting.